Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. I'm always like a... Yeah, is that okay?
Thanks for coming. I will. You want my autograph? That's not necessarily what we do. We want to invite him.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
I just have you watching.
Oh, yeah. Good job. You can't usually... Yeah. Thank you.
I just need to make sure, like, if you tap it, then it will... Yeah, so I just want to make sure. I'm going to check the setup real quick.
Well, we scooch everyone this progress. We're scooching together. And we got her to scooch over more, too. We're gonna get friendly.
She's worried about Karen hitting the button. I'll try to have Terry here. Just don't let that happen. I love Chopper. Okay?
Yeah, we're all good. Look at all the... Oh, no. We're here. He's ready to go. Don't miss one.
Okay. Are you in special silence?
Yeah.
Yeah, who was?
I just hope you're watching.
Oh, yeah. Good job. You can't usually... Yeah. Thank you.
I just need to make sure, like, if you tap it, it's not, um, if you, like, tap it, then it will... Yeah, so I just want to make sure. I'm going to check the setup real quick.
Well, we scooch everyone this progress. We're scooching together. And we got her to scooch over more, too. We're gonna get friendly. We're gonna get friendly.
She's worried about Karen hitting the button. I'll try to have Terry here. What game? Just don't let that happen. I love Chopper. Okay?
Yeah, we're all good. Look at all the... Oh, no. We're here. He's ready to go. Don't miss one.
Okay. Are you in special silence?
Yeah.
Yeah, who was?
I just... Yeah, that's true.
I'd like to have your attention, please. Call the regular meeting of the city council on seven thirty, council chambers, October twenty, October twenty-two, two forty. And we have roll call, please.
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Leirman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
And Evelyn.
Here.
And Matt Turkey.
Here. Seeing everyone here, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of ladies to the flag of the United States of America, as to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you, uh, please join me in a brief moment's time? Thank you. Under the president's agenda, we have the agenda before us. What is your pledge?
Would be accepted as presented?
Second. Motion second to accept. The agenda is presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?
Second. Motion second to accept the meeting minutes of October second, oh, excuse me, October sixth, presented. All in favor of something by the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the October sixth meeting minutes. What is your pledge?
Make the motion that being accepted is presented?[675.15]
Six and three quarters years. This is the fourth time we've appointed somebody to this board. This is the first time that we've had a flag waved at us that we're not following procedure. I'm happy to address that if we are in fact not following the procedure. That is absolutely 100% something we should do. The commissioners have also appointed somebody to that board in my six and three quarters years up here, and I have not had one say or one vote on what they did. So to that end, we all undertook this thinking we were following the way, the process, the way it's always been done. There's a, from what I understand, there's a year, the remainder of this year and next year on this board seat that we're appointing. And for us to take six months, I mean, we all know government moves slow, for us to take six months and create a task force and figure this out, we might as well not even appoint anybody. I mean, it'll be, so my thought was for the organization to have somebody in place that can be of benefit hopefully to the organization in the meantime. As you said, there are ways of changing bylaws if they want to change the procedure or the policy. This just feels, to me, it feels like now we're, we have a candidate that some of us like or don't like, and now we're ready to enforce these bylaws that frankly, the organization itself isn't following. So, I mean, if that's what we want to do, I'm fine with that. I'm only one seventh of the vote up here. But I thought two weeks ago, we made a good fake attempt at putting somebody on that organization like we have. Like I said, the fourth time since I've been up here. If, if we want to decide to do something different, I'm fine with that, but that's kind of where I'm at.
The only way to resolve this is go ahead with this motion.
I, I have something else I want to say.
May I finish what I said?
I thought you were done.
I apologize. The only way to resolve this is to go ahead with this motion, and we can vote it up or down with a simple majority. And if it goes down, then, you know, this particular motion is done, and we'll go ahead, you know, in another way. So, yes, sir. Counsel, okay.
I, I want to know what happens now that there, if, if we do go forth and, and this body approves, we've got commissioners that haven't, and we do. So how, so it's a 50-50 split?
I don't think we can answer that question.
And tha, and that's my question. I would like an answer to that. How, how does that work?
I mean, how many times in six and three quarters years, how many times has, has, how many times has it gone for the commissioners for approval?
I don't, I can't answer that. I know that they have, but it's not fair enough.
Never? I mean, like, like we mentioned, this, the bylaws are just almost impossible to interpret.
So as our legal counsel, you know, I'll ask you, we've discussed this last meeting.
Yes.
Is there something we should be doing differently?
Like, like I said, this is their, their bylaws. It's not our position to interpret it.
Right.
I'm not going to make a position on that. I do believe that this is the precedent that we've utilized in the past. I have been quashed with proceedings. Simply, I'm not prepared, I don't think I'm even sanctioned to try to interpret their bylaws.
Well, just your, the county commissioners have been approved.
This body's problem. I mean, if their laws aren't written, well, that's not our, and if they've done the same thing, and we've done it three times, why were those other three times not for the, if it falls on some other defective system? So if it falls on the same system we follow...
I, I just want, I still have to disagree.
Why? It's the same process. How can you disagree if it's the same thing?
I, I think, I think the discussion, go ahead, Nick, but I, I think it's not a legitimate discussion. We need to move ahead.
Because, because that's the way we've always done it. It is not justifiable in my discretion. The speaker himself, maybe it's due to document, but it is the document. And just because that's the way we've always done it, it isn't justifiable.
If majority...
And by the way, that document came from the county commissioners and the commissioners, the commissioners and the council of the city of Wilmington at that time. And you can call it stupid if you want to, but the predecessors put it in place.
But we don't have a legal opinion telling us what the right way forward is.
That's the reason we're going to stop it tonight.
So, we, we continue the way we go until you can tell me something otherwise, that even our, our counsel says it's not his job to interpret that. So that's their organization to fix it. We're moving forward the way we always have. I mean, that said, I'll move for second reading.
Motion for second reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second for second reading, Resilience Act 245. Please, we have roll call.
Okay.
No.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eflin?
No.
Perkey?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have a second reading?
A resolution appointing Joshua Ingle as the city's representative to the Clinton County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring emergency.
And we will have a third reading at our next meeting. Thank you all for your comments. That's all I have under my agenda. Mayor Samford.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to make an announcement that Ann has told me that they're going to wind up the cleanup of the city program.
Nick, may I interrupt you for just half a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I'm wondering if we could discuss the executive session before we move into the mayor's section, and if counsel feels that that is still necessary at the end of the meeting.
Based on what the deputy attorney general said, I don't have any additional questions, but I don't want to eliminate anybody else if they do.
So we would need a motion to, uh...
I would move to strike the executive session. Item sixteen, uh, A, from our agenda tonight.
Second. A motion second to eliminate the executive session from our meeting. Not all in favor, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? So we will, all for me, intend to remove the executive session. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen, you've done an outstanding job for us.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Now, Mr. Mayor.
You just saved the city 500 bucks. Oh, Annan. Annan's told me cold weather, they're going to stop the, uh, the citywide cleanup that they do on Saturday. She asked me to thank everybody who's involved in that and volunteer in sports. Michael, special thanks to you for helping her and helping her and leading on the cruise. Really appreciate what you, what you do. Friday, the October 21st, five to eight, we're going to be at Cruise Inn at Bosom? Bosom? Bosom. What John doing, probably call Bill Marines for the rest of my life for a dealership, where there will be nice cars, motorcycles, a DJ, free hot dogs, and door prizes. That's Friday, the 21st. Saturday, the 22nd, from five to six thirty, is the Drath's Room, Trump or Treat. That's hosted by the Parks and Recreation, J.W. Denver, wage park that goes on every year. It's been very well received. We encourage everybody to come up to that. And beginning October 31st, city will start its annual pickup. We've had that posted in the paper on what the schedules are going to be. There'll be three rounds of that. And please do not break leaves in the streets if those are stormy. Don't know if anybody noticed the delineators.
It's on my list.
Well, I got a call from a farmer that morning. He said, "John, I can't get my comb by." So I did. So I went out and looked, and they had started out there with a Walmart light, and they were up in front of Duked's Duchess at that time. And I stole myself. Wasn't very happy with me. But they stopped, and then we talked about a little bit, and we told them, "Take those all back down. They were not necessary." Where they were necessary was where we've had problems with people violating our left turns, and Duke and Duchess as well. So we had them solved there. We also had problems down in front of Dairy Queen. Actually, one of her signs has actually been run over, pulled, been done. We got to put them up down there, and also Wendy's was having trouble with left turns. And right now, that's all we're going to put them. And lots of businesses is violating our no left turn. You know, their riders violating that. We will put up, Dairy Queen even painted on their parking lot, a left turn there. I don't know what they were thinking when they did that.
So the gentleman who owns the Wendy's reached out to me and asked if he noticed that some were put up and then taken down? And would like to have them taken down in front of the business?
Can't do it.
Is there a traffic study or something that we can reference? Is there?
Absolutely.
An arrow or something that sees?
That's why we put, we didn't just arbitrarily put them up in front of them.
Well, we put them up now, and then we've taken them back down in front of other businesses that were already being, or Skyline Chili did one.
Wasn't an issue after that.
Well, as, we've only had no left turns for the last year, six months, I don't know. So have we done a study since then?
Yes.
To say, where's that study?
Our inspector was actually on the street and observed the left turns. This is not something we made up. I spoke to him too. I'm sorry, I had his affectionate business. But if he wants to point fingers, he needs to think about the traffic backs up on Ronback Avenue.
Well, that's a different discussion.
Lots of Dairy Queen's exit.
That's a different discussion.
They're, it's the same discussion, it's a traffic issue.
That's a zoning issue. The parking lot wouldn't be big enough for the traffic it has there. But the issue here is the guy's really upset because his business is down.
And I'm sorry for that. But my job is to protect the public, and that's what I'm going to do.
His, his point is accurate, is that we put them up in front of other businesses and decided we're going to take them down. And we haven't done a stuff, further study, we're going off one person's eyesight to...
They're not coming down now.
Okay.
I, I would like to say, I have already seen people go around them at, in left turn.
Yeah, I do too.
I was at Wendy's the other day.
Remember when you got one car barrier up? You got to stop that.
I want to say something, Mr. Mayor. As they are going out and around, they are now creating a bigger hazard for that. And I, I think that the traffic study should be further studied.
I'm going to put them up further if I would help.
One regard is to Mr. Chainman. You know, here's a guy that really complained and cried wolf and says, "If you put a median up, we'll shut our business down. We'll close it down. We'll put everything out on 68." So, you know, he agreed, and then we tried to accommodate him with his request for that barrier in front of the entrance to his restaurant. And now he's pointing fingers back at us. Go look at him.
Well, the, the problem is, Bill, at least from where I sit, I didn't know the delineators, the lane delineators. I didn't know those were coming. I mean, frankly, did any of us know those were coming?
Yeah.
I didn't. I didn't know where the planes were. Did I see that?
What they did that I had to take down, we're on.
So the, the idea was we were going to take out medians and then put traffic delineators up in place, and oh, that's a barrier. It's the same thing.
They're on the plane. Okay, on a lighter note. There were comments made in last council meeting about crime. The father thing. So I had the chief pull up the FBI crime statistics for me. Get that up on the screen. And regardless which we don't know, the FBI is the authority on crime statistics in the United States. And that graph shows it.
Is that per capita?
Yeah.
No, it's a number of crimes.
Per capita, if you think.
It's not per capita, just number of crimes. The graph on the top shows property crimes from 2011 to 2021. The bottom blue line is violent crimes. And you can see, the blue line is a little, the yellow is down to the center.
May we see the detail that this pivot table comes from?
Yeah, it comes from the FBI.
Okay.
Did we stop charging people with crimes?
I, I have a big issue. Just a little bit ago, did you not say it's your responsibility to keep this public safe? Did you not say that?
Jamie, uh, we, we really can't have just impromptu comments from the audience. You are more than welcome to come out at the end of the meeting.
This, this means nothing. We don't know where the audit's from.
This is from a comment from the audit, wasn't it?
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
So this, this was brought up from a comment from the audit. So can audits not work then? Or can they, a comment, okay.
Not at this time. Thank you. We'll let you speak.
That's false representation. So we need, we need to make that note on, um...
Folks, I'm going to have to ask you not to comment, just, you know, from your seat. We'll give you an opportunity to talk.
Yeah.
All right. I'll, I'll have you all moved out of here if you want to get up. Are, are we done? Chief can move everybody out of here. Now, is that what you want?
Ladies and gentlemen, let's try to stay orderly. Okay, if you have any questions about the, the crime statistics, I'd be more than happy to meet with you one-on-one, give you that website where you can actually go to it yourself and be able to show which crimes were reported to us. All of our crimes get sent to uniform crime report by the FBI. So I'd be more than happy to meet with you at the end of the council meeting tonight. I'll stick around, okay?
We need, we need to keep this discussion orderly. Thank you. Uh, Mayor, it's Lee's report.
Mr. Mayor, a couple things. I know you don't want to talk about delineators anymore, but I, 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 I will, I give you one observation. If you look at them, they got little white marks all over them where people have hit them. I don't think that, delineators have never worked well, but, uh... Yeah. Way, way, way to main. We put delineators out there and find that...
Got turtles.
So we tried turtles. There's little concrete things, you know, that you put out there to separate them. That didn't work either. There are so many people here, but they broke them up. And we don't want to replace those either. I, I really think that, uh, it wouldn't hurt to take them out. We just kind of continue to watch what we're doing, because whether they, to me, whether they disobey the left-hand turn signs or not, or whatever, to me, that's almost kind of like, you know, wearing your seatbelt. As long as it says you will wear your seatbelt. And those of us who have any intelligence, I think, do with it. And there's people that don't, and they take their lives in the hands of villain. They're breaking the law. The law's enforced, though, if that's the, the law enforcement people can do it, there's nothing else, right? The delineators can make it. That's my, that's probably coming. Oh, no, I have one other comment. Your people and Sheriff's Department cleared out those camps in the last couple weeks. And I sincerely appreciate that. I think, well, everybody in Wilmington does. You did a wonderful job, and I sincerely appreciate it.
Oh. Beth, I'm so sorry. Uh, I don't, are you speaking, Beth, or is, uh...
We both are.
Gentlemen, both of you, I'll let you start off. Beth Huber, it's your report on economic development.
Good evening, members, members of the public. Beth Huber with the Clinton County Port Authority. In the Clinton County Port Authority is the Economic Development Group, representing the city, the county, and the CIC. And as a, in, as city, as an investor, we like to come in and others so aren't creepy and share some information with you. So we have some of that. And Jim Buckner with the SDEC, the Small Business Development Center, is also going to speak with us. So, just to give you a brief update on what's been going on and the work that we've been doing, my first shout out is to Rick. We get about three leads a week from BDC, and they say, "There's a company here, they're going to spend X number of thousand dollars in capital, they're going to bring this many jobs, they need this much water, this much electric, this much sewer, and this much gas." And I shoot Rick an email and say, "In 24 hours, can you tell me, and this property, and this property, and can we have water, and do we have sewer?" And looking past we got, and even on a Sunday night, Rick will say, "Ah." So very much appreciate his support as we respond to these. We don't hear back a lot of clients on that, you know, that, and we send them up to the BDC, and then I get a notice whether they're advanced on to the state, jobs are high or not. And that happens, you know, maybe one out of every five that is advanced, and then sometimes we never hear again. So the most recent one was submitted last Friday for, I guess it was submitted Monday for a project that would, for about 280 acres, with a huge capital investment. And so trying to figure out how we get in the next four years, so we have time to build the water, the capacity, and that's an electric out there, so. So that's one of the things that we do, that the Port Authority does on behalf of the city and the county, and for economic development. We have two spec developers looking in the county. We are very close to a building that's about, going to be about 285,000 square feet out towards the airpark. The developer said, "If we can get a half lease, we'll build it." And right now, we've got those commitments, so we're working on the numbers. The interest rates are going up, and we need to get the numbers done before the developer hits that tipping point where it's no longer cost effective for him to continue. So we're working to get that, that going. The graph, the county, the Port Authority applied for two brownfields, which the state has awarded. It was in the same round of grant funding that the Land Bank, who, they were completed some, uh, great requests. And so we will get a million dollars in grant funds from the Ohio Department of Public for about one project is a remediation, and one project is a, an assessment. The remediation will remove the lead mound that some of you who have been in town for years know that out at the airpark, that was the old shooting range for the military when it was a military airpark, and then the Sheriff's Department used. And so you can't, it doesn't leach, it doesn't move, but you can't play with the dirt. You actually have to move all of the dirt and take it someplace safe. And that, that project alone is going to be about $750,000 to take our mountain away. We continue to have mega site discussions. The BDC is very interested in helping Clinton County locate a couple of these sites, 1,000 acres or more, or so and so. And he says, "Hey, you know, we've got this, is some of the leads we can't respond to because we don't have the acres, we don't have it assembled." And Rick has come to some discussions with us for trying to get the BDC and the utility providers and the county all together at these meetings to say, "Which are the best places in the county? What is the most effective place to put this? What's the least cost to build? All of that, and what does it look like?" Now, that we're going to do it tomorrow, but if we were going to do it, this would be the place that would be the quickest opportunity to be able to do that. So those discussions are continuing. We continue to meet with local businesses on a regular basis as far as checking in to see how they're doing, things that are going well and things that are not, and continuing to work with that feedback. And I'd like to invite Jim Buckner up with the Small Business Development Center. He, uh, the Port Authority, as part of the Economic Development Program, engages the Small Business Development Center out of Miami University, the originals.
Right.
And they have met, Jim and his team's met with several businesses in the city, and I'll let you.
Thank you. Just briefly, because we just closed our fiscal year, we're on a federal fiscal year, and I'm the Associate Director of the Miami University Small Business Development Center. And Clinton County is a county that we just celebrated our third anniversary of working with. Part of that obviously means we work inside the city of Wilmington. And one of the things that I would be glad to email you is, in terms of specific information, is that during the federal fiscal year, which is October 1 of 2021 to September 30 of 2022, we were able to assist small businesses in packaging a little over 3, 3.6 million in commercial loans. So as a result of that, we also had an increase, they had an increase of about 2.6 million in sales, and they added 74 full-time equivalents to payrolls and retained about 67 jobs. So those businesses spanned from family and eateries to manufacturers. So it's a, it's a very diverse group. We, we're looking to formalize those numbers. We don't like to send those out until we get, get our audit back, but we expect our audit back on our numbers by the end of next week. So the SBA cleared, cleared those numbers to share this evening. So I would be glad to send that out when we get final numbers, either in emails, or set personally, or with a committee that, that you choose. So we are agents of the Small Business Administration, the Ohio Department of Development, and the University, Miami University. So any questions you might have, I will certainly get my contact information to you, and we can chat more on the specifics side. Each client we have signs a confidentiality agreement with us, where we agree not to share specifics about their business unless there's an explicit approval to do so. So, thank you for your time. Would there be any questions right now? You have a very active small business community in the city, so just, I don't know how aware you are of that, but there are people who, when they go for loans, they're, they put their money where their mouth is, in simple terms. So, anything, yeah, it's a very healthy thing.
Thank you, Jim.
So, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Is that all you have, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. You're going to cover for me, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Auditor Vance, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one piece of legislation tonight, adopting preliminary legislation for ODOT to do our bridge inspections. The Federal Highway Administration requires us to have our bridges inspected. The state of Ohio offers those bridge inspections to the municipality. We've been doing this for a few years now, and so this is a resolution authorizing, means you enter an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, for them to inspect our bridges that are required by the Federal Highway Administration. Questions about that?
We've done this before.
Yep. This is housekeeping stuff.
Do I have to, or the council member bring this legislation forward, please?
The last time we shopped them, there was not a better deal out there. I remember being substantially, substantially cheaper to go through.
It is.
The Ohio Department of Transportation.
Yes. And, yeah, you can't be free, yeah, you said it, you can't be free. Yeah. It's just a matter of jumping in.
Okay. I'll move for the first reading on Resolution 2246 by Title Alden.
Second. Motion, uh, for the second, I'll give first reading, Resolution 2246. All in favor, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? First reading, please.
A resolution adopting preliminary legislation for ODOT municipal bridge inspection program services, PID 117554, and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2246 a second and third type, uh, reading by Title Alden.
Second. Motion second for suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eflin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution adopting preliminary legislation for ODOT municipal bridge inspection program services, PID 117554, and declaring emergency.
Move to pass Resolution 2246 as read.
Second. Motion second for passing, roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eflin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you, Resolution 2246.
Aye.
That's the only piece of legislation I have to see. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Schottier. Appreciate it. All right. Moving into committee reports. City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
Uh, we have no report. I just want to thank Beth for her reporting, Jim.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Motion, second, for suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations to the ordinance 2250, second, by title only.
Second. Motion, second, for suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second or reading?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Pass ordinance 2250, is read?
Second. Motion, second, for suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second or reading?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Pass ordinance 2250, is read?
Second. Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Motion carries, second, third reading, please.
In ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move to pass ordinance 2250, is read?
Second. Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Ordinance 2251 passes.
Nothing further, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Aubrey. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have several pieces of legislation tonight. The first is a second, third reading on 2247. If you remember our last meeting, we discussed the timberland. This is doing the proper due diligence and all notifications and timeliness. But this is the tip that allows us to collect the increase in revenue on each lot and then allow the developer to be reimbursed for the infrastructure supers and sidewalks and stuff, so. Are there questions there? Tips are kind of a intricate thing, but we've, we've talked this one a lot since last year. So if there are no questions, I'll move to suspend the rules and regulations for ordinance 2247.
Second. Motion, second, for suspension of rules, ordinance 2247, roll call, please.
Is that Lierman?
That was Lierman, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
And, Mr. President, I should have said to suspend the rules and give a second or reading. I didn't specify a reading, I'm sorry.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Motion carries, one extension by Osborne, may we have second or reading?
In ordinance rescinding ordinance 02209, declaring the improvement of certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, creating incentive district to declare such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public, public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made that directly benefit or that once made will directly benefit the parcel for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and new book taxes, providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Advice Code, section 5709, 40C, 442, 43, 832, and 85. End of comments.
Aren't you glad we did second and third together? All right, thank you, sir. I move to pass ordinance 2247, is read?
Second. Motion, third, the second by Lierman, for passing ordinance 2247, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Motion carries, one extension by Osborne, may we have second or reading?
In ordinance rescinding ordinance 02209, declaring the improvement of certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, creating incentive district to declare such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public, public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made that directly benefit or that once made will directly benefit the parcel for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and new book taxes, providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Advice Code, section 5709, 40C, 442, 43, 832, and 85. End of comments.
Aren't you glad we did second and third together? All right, thank you, sir. I move to pass ordinance 2247, is read?
Second. Motion, third, the second by Lierman, for passing ordinance 2247, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Ordinance 2252 passes.
All right, so that's, that, I think that's finally taken care of. Thank you for all your hard work, I really do appreciate everything you, you also.
Mr. President, we're very happy.
Thank you.
That's why she came.
She wanted to make sure we got it done. The next thing on my agenda, if you remember our last meeting, we had two public hearings to discuss zoning change on our two properties in the downtown area. The first of which was, what position was it here? 169 North South, Judy Goodough's office and her husband want to have it transitioned from, change from downtown court to downtown position, which is in line with all the other properties on the street that would allow them to sell it as a residential residence, so. Are there any questions there? Seeing none, I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 2252 by title only.
Second. Motion, third, the second by Lierman, for passing ordinance 2252, roll call, please.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second or reading?
In ordinance changing the zoning of real property located on North South Street in the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give ordinance 2252 a second, third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, second, for pass and roll call, please.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Ordinance 2252 passes, one extension by Osborne.
All right, so that's, that, I think that's finally taken care of. Thank you for all your hard work, I really do appreciate everything you, you also.
Mr. President, we're very happy.
Thank you.
That's why she came.
She wanted to make sure we got it done. The next thing on my agenda, if you remember our last meeting, we had two public hearings to discuss zoning change on our two properties in the downtown area. The first of which was, what position was it here? 169 North South, Judy Goodough's office and her husband want to have it transitioned from, change from downtown court to downtown position, which is in line with all the other properties on the street that would allow them to sell it as a residential residence, so. Are there any questions there? Seeing none, I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 2252, is read?
Second. Motion, third, the second by Lierman, for passing ordinance 2252, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
You, ordinance 2253 passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perky. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. You have before you the auditor report for September 2022. Does anyone have any comments?
Move to be accepted, President.
Second. Motion, second, accept the auditor report for September 2022, roll call, please.
The report is accepted.
Now we come to the portion of the evening that's open to the public, and anyone that wishes to speak, they certainly come forward. We are gonna be, because we have a lot of folks here tonight that wish to speak, and we want to hear from everybody, but we will very strenuously limit your speaking time to three minutes, and our clerk is gonna keep track of that, so if you would try to adhere to that, that would be very helpful.
Mr. President, do you mind if I put one thing in real quick? I need about 30 seconds. I've spoken to Service Director Schiker about this before, and our engineer, Paul Good, who's from the city, and we discussed, had several phone calls from people wanting to discuss the speed limit on West Main Street, where Wayne Road kind of funnels in there by the fairgrounds, at Juspieen Avenue. There is, it's 35 miles an hour, but it can be a racetrack through there, to say the least. I, Chief, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this out loud, I was behind a car that was, that came in from Wayne Road, and I kind of sped up to see how fast it was going, it was 54 miles an hour.
Osborne.
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second or third?
In ordinance, changing the zoning of real property located on East Locust Street in the city of Wilton, Ohio.
I move to pass ordinance twenty-two fifty-three as read.
Sorry.
Motion second for passing ordinance twenty-two fifty-three. Roll call please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
You ordinance twenty-two fifty-three passes.
Uh, Mr. President, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Counselor, per se. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. You have before you, uh, the auditor report for September two thousand twenty-two. Does anyone have any comments?
Move to be accepted, President.
Sorry.
Motion second, accept the auditor report for September two thousand twenty-two on favor, see if I was saying.
Aye.
The report is accepted. Now we come to the portion of the evening that's open to the public, and anyone that wishes to speak, uh, may certainly come forward. Uh, we are gonna be, because we have a lot of folks here tonight that wish to speak, and we wanna hear from everybody. Uh, but we will, uh, very strenuously limit, uh, your speaking time to three minutes, and our clerk is gonna keep track of that, so if you would try to adhere to that, that would be very helpful.
Mr. President, do you mind if I put one thing over quick? I need about thirty seconds. Uh, I've spoken to, uh, uh, Service Director Scheich about this before, and our, uh, engineer Paul Good, who lives in the city, and we discussed, had several phone calls from people wanting to discuss the speed limit on West Main Street, uh, where Wayne Road kind of funnels in there by the fairgrounds, at Josephine Avenue. Um, there is, it's thirty-five miles an hour, but it can be a racetrack through there, uh, to say the least. I, Chief, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this out loud. I, uh, was behind a car that was, that came in from Wayne Road, and, uh, I kind of sped up to see how fast it was going. It was fifty-four miles an hour. So, at fifty-four miles an hour, I backed off and they kept speeding. So, I, it's something I wanted to talk to Councilperson Evelyn about, uh, kind of taking it to your committee to discuss, uh, the speed through there. It can become a pretty wicked corridor. It goes to thirty-five, but that goes all the way down until, I think, Wood Street, just past, between Wood and Spring Street, where it drops down to twenty-five. So, I think it's worth discussing and maybe, you know, putting up a little bit more enforcement out there, discussing possibly changing it. And Paul, Paul Good, who did seem like he was, uh, in favor of the idea, but I think it's worth us discussing because it's, it's really fast up there. So, I just wanted to put it on your agenda for, you know, get a discussion, walk to the next meeting.
I'll ask the clerk then to set up a meeting and let the committee discuss this and ask the chief, whether or not.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? If not, I did see one hand back there. Mr. Stoops, you wanna come help? Give your name and address.
This is Stoops, one eighteen, South Marver, here very short. My understanding is a multi-agency study coming down, sort of, about the homeless and such, and, uh, public findings are supposed to be starting, uh, maybe in a month or two, am I correct in this? They might, have to stop like that. Um, have you taken consideration of COVID law and these numbers before we spend tax dollar monies on this two-year study that formed during all the COVID restrictions? And I think this crime stat almost shows that any study darned, done in the past two years could very well be a skewed number because nothing was normal during that time. Everybody was unemployed, place was closed down, there was nothing. I think it, before these large amounts of tax dollars were spent, you need to look at the study and think, does this have happened five years prior or five years after? Is this just a fluke? And again, I do not know the results of the study either way. And I just, I don't know, the two years, a lot of closed meetings, Zoom meetings, public didn't evolve normally. So, just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would like to join us next.
Can I say something?
Oh, sure. Yes, I just wanted to say that the Clinton County Coalition for Homelessness promised me today
that they will have an open public forum in November, and probably more to follow, but they, they are gonna try to investigate with by November. It focuses on recommendations for homelessness. I don't think they've talked much about crime. That's not so much of the issue. Um, but, uh, that'll be, people will be letting know when that happens, okay? So, I would say probably mid, uh, late November.
All right. Thank you, Pastor.
Who else would like to speak?
Oh, I'll speak.
Yes, sir.
No, it was last, last time, so maybe I'm gonna be at the top of the list.
I, I cut you off early, didn't I?
Yeah, I know, I'm just gonna address that.
Well, let's give him an extra thirty seconds because I cut him off early. And that's the period of time I think I cut him off.
This is all related to the, what we were talking about last time. I only have.
All right. We need your name and address.
So, Darryl, um, Clarksville, Ohio.
Darryl.
Petrie.
Thank you.
And this time I would like to have, have a three minutes without being called. Um, in the last council meeting, I came here to speak as an advocate for Casey Pitzer and her family. During that meeting, I was called for you, Mr. President, and I was asked what Casey Pitzer's.
I've, I've addressed that, you know, I don't think you need to bring it up.
Well, I'm just saying I was called, but, but I was asked, I was asked, there was, when you did that, um, what it had to do with the city. And I gave a valid reason stating because the case was reopened, which Mr. Pitzer was told was. After the valid reason, I was told that my three minutes were up. Again, you, you addressed that. So, um, I do believe it was unconstitutional to do that, to me at least, um, at, at the least. And the reason I'm here tonight is to clarify some things. Um, things like, what are the duties of you, Mr. Mayor? ORC Section seven oh five, dot seven nine says, powers and duties state to see the laws and ordinances are enforced. Ohio ORC Section three, seven three three, dot three four states that the mayor shall supervise the conduct of all officers of the municipal corporation to inquire into and examine the grounds of all reasonable complaints against any such officers and cause their violations or neglect of duty to be promptly punished or reported to proper authority. The big problem is here that several of us have, have put irrefutable evidence in your lap, Mr. Mayor, and you refuse to respond, kind of like an ostrich for the head and the same. The law states under ORC Section seven three, seven dot oh two, under the direction of the mayor, the director of public safety shall be executive head of the police. I have personally tried to reach out to you twenty to thirty times by phone, email, in person, social media, about murder and corruption, and you have not responded to me not even once. Hence the reason I stand here today. It's time to start telling the truth and doing what is right, and that's a quote that came from you back in two thousand nineteen. It's time for you to take, it's, it's time for you to take responsibility. You said in this meeting, my job is to protect the public and to do what is, to, to protect the public, and that's what you're gonna do. Then I guess you need to find and prosecute the investigators who committed felonies during Casey Pitzer's investigation, Chief. You need to arrest Wilmington PD officer who said Marvin Nature, Nature was bleeding and standing for three to five minutes out of, out of a wound, but the blood only went to the front of his face. You can see it in the last picture. And I, I, I'm guessing you never gave any of the evidence to any of the other council members when that evidence was handed to you on your office. Um, we can't have murderers patrolling our streets out there as good guys with lethal weapons and deadly force. So, my question is, what are you gonna do about it?
Thank you.
Mr. Pitzer would like to speak as well.
He certainly can be recognized.
Good, my name is Greg Pitzer, one-one-six, Thomas Lane, Wilmington, Ohio.
Thank you.
I also would like to address this council with no interruption, okay?
I don't want to interrupt unless someone gets out of line.
My family and I have been waiting for ten years for answers regarding my daughter's murder investigation. We have been lied to, hung up on by investigators, broke the promises of inmate by the city, and investigators, the investigators have ignored us. Ignored us. Have called me crazy for simply asking questions. Everyone who should be able to answer our questions has refused to answer or discuss what really happened to my daughter. Over the last month, I have sent several emails to all you city officials. To date, not even one of you has requested back to any of my emails, responded back to any of them, none of them. Are you that busy? I have requested evidence logs on my daughter's case for years, and I still, to this day, have not received the records. Is that your job? Yeah, aren't you logged?
Painted paper, Greg.
Huh?
Read that paper, man.
I have requested the evidence. The investigation's clearly been mishandled. Three thousand two hundred twenty-three other people have agreed by signing a petition requesting to reopen the case. Today, no one can explain why her clothes, the grass she was holding was destroyed. No one can explain why the milk crate and the roper found four point three feet away from my daughter's body, body, in a newly dug pond. Never, was not ever logged as evidence. According to law, it should have been. We know and can prove that felony crimes were committed during my daughter's investigation. Y'all want to know why nothing has been done about the crime. Key and critical evidence in the potential murder case does not just up and disappear un- unless something really bad has happened. Chief Whalen, Detective Riley, who investigated my daughter's case, have been deemed dirty according to their actions and involvement in the two nineteen, twenty nineteen sex game. We want to demand the case to be reopened. Request the city to follow up on my regional complaints of my daughter's evidence being illegally destroyed. We want to demand the case to be reopened. We request the city follow up. My daughter's investigation being destroyed, we want to demand the city uphold the promise of, of, uh, city's review by Chief Ron Cravens. In the same letter, Chief Cravens was gaslighting me by telling me an excellent job was done on the case. He went as far as saying he wouldn't have done anything differently, yet when asked about missing evidence, he evaded questions and never answered. Chief Cravens stated what to do was made about the polygraph, and it was only a tool. Yet he investigated state investigators to review. After much pressure, the state recommended the polygraph test be re-administered, just like I requested in the first place when Cravens downgraded my suggestion by saying the polygraph was just a tool. Apparently, full state investigators find useful enough to re-administer on cold cases. Chief Cravens in and on to, to define the meaning of investigating stadium. Investigators must be thorough and account for all reasonably known facts. Yet he or no one else can seem to explain the reasonably known facts. My daughter's key critical fitness physical essence was gone.
You've, you've gone over your time, but I'm gonna let you finish.
Okay, I'm just about done.
That's fine.
Okay, it became very clear Chief Ron Cravens was lying to me. When the investigation was really taking place, Detective Ross Riley told us the suspects had passed polygraph. Not only me, he told a whole room full of us with us many individuals that they had all passed this flying colors. Okay? Earlier, as your Chief Ron Cravens promised all of us in the letter on behalf of the city, and I did his review, we expect nothing less than that, and we're not going to accept anything less than reopening the case, and we shouldn't have to since a promise was made by the city. Earlier this month, I got an email from the city HR guy stating my daughter's case, in fact, reopened to only minimal extent, minimal extent. Now I am being told the case is not reopened at all, not even to a minimal extent. Why? How can that be? How can that be? Do you need your nice daughters? This is my firstborn daughter murdered, and it covered it up. Now I'm being told the case, Mayor, Chief, President Law and Safety Director, can any of you get one single bit reasonable on the daughter's case if not being reopened?
You're, you're talking to the legislative area?
Yeah, I'm talking to why you can't give me a reason on the daughter's case.
I'm trying to give you, I'm trying to give you an answer.
Okay.
That, that's really not our area. That would be more in the police area or the administration.
Mayor, is that right?
Right there.
I just said the administration, so.
There are ones, there are ones.
Okay, can you give me one single answer what the city has known about the BCI recommendation since August? Yet no one from the city contacted me or any one of my family. We have to find everything now about my daughter's case by ourselves, which, why is that? Why hasn't the city been transparent about my daughter, whom many of us believe was murdered? Does anyone have any answers for me tonight? Anyone? Does anyone know what happened to my daughter's evidence? Why was her clothes burned? I've, I've called four generals. That is not their possession. That is my possession, and they destroyed it.
Biological evidence.
Mayor, Chief, do you have an answer for tonight?
Biological evidence was destroyed. I'd be more than happy to.
Good, I'd go after that then. Take this book, we're gonna go page one within the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I thank everyone.
Mr. Pitzer.
Thank you.
Mr. Pitzer?
Yeah.
I called you very excited.
Well, I work for Nick.
We've known each other for about thirty-five years. I, I can't tell you how sorry I am about that. Totally sympathize with the pressure going through. I, I just kind of want to elaborate a little bit on, on what the president said.
Okay.
While we're sitting, have, have all the city people road for you, and would like to help you out. Counsel can really only pass laws and enforce them. Uh, we have laws on the books. We run the books department already, but I, I don't want, I want to help you out.
But by the mayor's.
As a council member, I don't know what, what I can do. I think probably all of us feel the same way. Um, and the reason I didn't respond to your, you know, my red and all.
Right.
And I know somebody coming from. But unfortunately, council, as I say, is limited as to what they can do now.
Hold the mayor's seat for the fire.
Sir, did you not interrupt? I, I will have you reviewed.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very.
I'm hearing it, I couldn't hear you anymore.
But as a council, we would say there's, we're limited as to what we can do. Um, if you have suggestions that legally, that we can pursue, I'm sure all of us would be willing to listen and hear what those are. The fact that whether there was an investigation opened or not opened, frankly, if there's an investigation going on, Greg, I said, I said, I'm sympathetic with you, but I don't want to go in. Because I want to, I want them to do their thing.
Right.
And then, when they get the information together, then take it through the judiciary system.
There was detectives assigned, didn't you say that? Nobody's talked to me, so I could talk to you anyway.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of folks who want to talk here tonight.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, everyone.
Let me, let me, one minute, back up to this. I gave you all a handout.
I need your name and address.
I'm sorry, Tony, uh, two or four Fisher Street.
For these?
Combs.
Combs?
Yes. Oh, four Fisher Street.
Thank you.
If you could, if you could all turn to the back page. This is an email between myself and Chief Ron Cravens, and I was speaking to him concerning, um, Mr. Pitzer's daughter Casey. At the very bottom, you want to see, he states, I forwarded, I forwarded it because I think there's something there. No, I, uh, no, I don't. It, uh, it was a phone call because I, that was me inquiring if he had a copy of the email that I could have to then hold him to the fire, to the flame. And if you'll turn to the next page after that, it looks like this. This is a, an email from Mr. Zahid. Mr. Zahid is Chief Counsel, BCI, stating he received nothing from Ron Cravens. So, again, you got trend lying by Chief, okay? So then if you flick over to the other page, you'll see the actual polygraph that was failed dramatically. Everything was deceptive. And then the chief at that time was whaling. Well, then he lied to the family, said it was a passover. That kind of puts holes in this, does it not? If you've got Chiefs lying, is this credible? I'm gone. Crime, crime is, is reported if it's only on us, correct? If it's reported on us, would, would you, would you agree to that? I mean, you've got two Chiefs with, with, with a trend of lying. Here it is, proof. Would, was you told about this, Mr. Pitzer?
No, I wasn't.
Gentlemen, were you? This, these are her children. No one was. And I'm like, and I, I would love to, Ms., Mr. Evelyn, I know your children. If these people came to you and said to you that they passed with flying colors, and then you find out that they lied to you. I have, I have daughters too, and I think about them. I go and look at them every single night and think about that man right there. And then I think about lies, lies. Why? Mr. Mayor, lies. You, you, you were in council, sir, in this place, correct?
Let's tone it down.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean.
A little passionate, that's all. You, you, you were in council at the time at this place, were you not?
Disrespect.
I don't think I disrespect you, but, but were you, were you not in council in this place? Okay. So, again, I, I looked at this and I, I bet you everyone in here, as you've seen the, the response, disagrees with it. And then you, I've just proven two of your Chiefs were pathological liars. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Simple lie.
Who'd like to speak next?
I'll speak.
It's for Murray. This is kind of on opposite note from what Tony said, but Jamie Knowles, five, five-five-zero, work Boulevard. As some of you know, I found my home broken into, and this is why I was very adamant that this, this doesn't mean anything because there's no information. This is just a bar graph. I understand that Chief put this together. I work for a worldwide company. If I were to turn something like this in with no detail behind what this pivot table comes, or this, this bar graph comes from what pivot table and the detail, I wouldn't have God on this, guys. So, with that, I will commend Mr. Cravens, or Chief Cravens, and, and the Wilmington PD or the break-in I had. But we're talking about the drop in crime. My family home is in a very good part, or was a very good part of Wilmington. I live in Danbury Edition, which is one of the best subdivisions in Wilmington. Anybody disagree with that? I'm afraid I don't sleep at night. My wife has nightmares at night. I want to know what's being done about the vagrancy in this city. Chief Cravens doesn't have enough people. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
He disappeared.
We, we don't, we don't have enough law enforcement in this town anymore. We don't even have a dog in the city anymore. Because of that fact, my wife and I and the burglar were put in harm's way. And I say that because he was obviously on drugs. I'm gonna say it was heroin. My wife and I had been back in the house after Wilmington media checked it. They had ransacked the house so bad, every drawer, every closet, carpet was ripped up. That doesn't speak to that. This individual got up, left one upstairs bedroom, walked into another upstairs bedroom. I'm a CCW holder. My wife is a CCW holder. She's a Desert Storm bag. Now, there's a combat veteran that's having nightmares, can't sleep. We have a family home that we may or may not move into now. I don't know that I feel comfortable in my family home because of the vagrancy and homelessness and the individuals that are enabling this to happen. That is why I asked what I asked of you, Mr. Mayor. It's not, it was not meant disrespectful at all. John, you know I respect you a lot. And I'm sorry, but I, I am gonna ask for a little more time. This is very important. This needs to be addressed.
How much more time?
Just a few more minutes.
How about one more?
That'll work.
Thank you.
This council, this city, all of us here, need to spread this word. We need to solve this problem. I can't, there's, there's one councilman I really can't look at right now because he's part of the problem. I'm not gonna mention any names, but for somebody that's supposed to be a Christian that follows.
Let's not get too.
Oh, okay.
Fred.
Okay. Oh, okay. But others can be disrespectful. Not a problem, Mark. I get it. Um, long and short of that, what my point is, my point is this. We have a huge problem in the city. We don't have enough funding to have the right people in the right seats of the bus. We have plenty of the right people, too many seats. We don't have it all. Because I want to tell you what, and I said, I said to everybody there, had that gentleman come down with the knife that he had, that he stole from mine, this would be a whole different conversation. So, think about that when you guys go to bed at night.
Thank you, Dana. Who'd like to speak? Anyone else want to speak to us? Those are takeers. Any other comments from counsel?
I have one.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
County Collins, three-four-five Canyon Drive.
Glad to have you with us.
I'm a little late to some of this party, uh, but not gonna sugarcoat it. Building across the street from the Paternal Order of Eagles, you're three main streets. Um, can you get more clarification from somebody on the old Dick Day building, the white building on the other side of the alley? Ownership with that? Anybody got that? No? Okay, and Herb was behind that.
The old party shop, right?
The old party shop, right. Uh, sits on the outside of the alley. Says rumors, right? We're all going through, I'm here because of rumors. I'm here because friends have asked me to be here. I'm here because some of you sitting there are personal friends. Right? I agree. We have a problem. I agree there's people working on that problem. But there has to be something intermediary that we all together, you, us, together can do to try to start mitigating some of the issues that aren't real. I don't know, Chief, if those numbers are right or wrong or whatever, but I know what I see. You know, it may not be a crime, but urinating on parts of our property or the Eagles is a problem. Sleeping on our back docks is a problem. Little things lead to bigger things, so we need to figure out how we can secure, we've increased our lighting, we're increasing our cameras, just to keep our members and our bartenders and employees safer. Because they're not, they don't feel safe walking out the door. We have people sitting outside our front door using our Wi-Fi. I've told them, change password, they're doing it, but, you know, that's about like a deal with internal. But I think as a community, we all know this is a problem. As a council, you all know it's a problem. How do we work together to find a little solution to start that can grow into a bigger solution?
Thank you.
Close the kitchen. That'll solve it. Put the best in them in.
Same with deals. Can I just say regarding Casey's case, that if the council can help the, the, the Mr. Mayor muster up some answers for the family? Because he's just, you haven't done anything this far here. It's ridiculous. Mr. Shiddig, you're ahead of the police. You should be involved in this as well. You told me personally, you've seen everything. You've seen the Nathan case, you've seen the Pitzer case. You've seen it, so address it. Thank you.
I think the, the lie about the polygraph is pretty huge. That's a felony in itself. That's by cops, too.
We have Lorenz, one-eighteen, South Marver Street.
Hold on just a second.
Oh.
Sorry, I need to get your, um, what's your address again?
Um, and this will go along with what most of the people are here for. Um, the other night, I had a meeting with, uh, Lee Hamlin and Mr. Snar, who is on the board of Trishtree Ministries. And I will say that Mr. Snar was very receptive to the things that we were saying. I don't think that it is, um, I don't think that it is so much a board issue, I think it's with the person running Sugar Tree Ministries. Lee was not receptive to anything that he said. There were not changes that he wanted to make. It was pretty much like, this is how it's going to run, I'm going to feed everybody who comes in, and we're not going to change anything. So what I'm asking, Mr. Snar, is that you think about who is running that ministry and what is really behind what he's doing.
Three to fifteen a year.
Thank you.
Can I go down a little bit? Because your red side says you can't. Nothing is a red side. I'm not homeless and I'm not an addict.
Do ministries have to be zoned, I'm curious?
Wait, I don't need comments.
No, I was just curious about zoning, do they have to be zoned as ministry as a church? Because that's manufactured. I looked at, I looked into that, I was just curious, because you look around the churches and they're all zoned as ministry. That's not zoned as ministry, it's zoned as manufactured.
Anybody else?
I do. Jamie Johns, thirty-five, thirty-seven, South Beach, where I'm from. I'm the one that done reports, and a lot of you guys know who I am. You see the crime, you see what's going on. I want to let you know that you need to look at your fire department report. There was smoke on top of Sugar Tree Ministries, and the fire department went there to check on it. They wrote down in their report that there were cots upstairs for sleeping purposes. This is zoned life industrial use. This is not a food place or a residence place. The zoning is messed up, and I want this corrected. I want you guys to look at it, that there is cots upstairs and it's documented by your fire department. I'm told, once the doors are locked, they're locked for the night. But we have videos, I have people out on the streets videoing Sugar Tree Ministries almost around the clock, and we have videos of those doors on the side being open, letting people in after dark. Lee Sandlin is not on the premises. I want to also make note that people that are allowing other people to come in, some of these people are former drug addicts themselves that have been kept clean for a while. That's very good. But we have to see who's monitoring us, the honesty, we all know that drug addicts lie. They are effective liars, okay? So I want to know, and I want you guys to reach out to Sugar Tree Ministry and hold them accountable, because something real fishy, we've got cots being reported by the fire department. That's all I have to say.
I could address, Mr. Snar, there's one question, and maybe you can follow this later. But if you go to the sex offenders list, there's two that are reporting that address as their homes. And I'm just wondering if that's the ones that are camped out in cots up there.
That actually has been resolved.
Okay.
One of them has been moved to his address to the sleep house, and the other one has not been around for over a year and has not been reporting.
Immediately after we reported it, like two days later, it got fixed.
Interesting.
I also need to note that I approached, or Mr. Snar approached me after the last meeting, and I notified him of the one eighty address being used by two sexual offenders, Mr. Potts and Mr. Wiesenberg. Mr. Snar went to Lee Sandlin, and within, that was on a, I guess on a Friday, by the time Monday, late Monday, I was told or understand, that address was corrected.
Also, one more thing, Mr. Snar, if you can back this, the gentleman who reported that.
This is your last?
I understand, I got you. This gets reported to the Sheriff's Department, so the Sheriff's Department knows this, because the Sheriff's Department then turns that over to the state. So the Sheriff's Department knows these people, these pedophiles are using this ministry as an alias, or they knew it at the time, which has been corrected. But you see the problem, they turn this over to law enforcement, and they pitch up this, so they ha.
Any other comments?
Moralirs, how about that?
Any other council comments?
I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, thank you for sharing with us. Do we have a motion?
No, no, you're right.
We are.